Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Monday, March 4th, 2024. We are actually going to start with a pledge, but we would like to invite Grayson from PAC 516 right up front here to lead us in the pledge. If you'd all please rise.
If you're in uniform, Scouts salute, non-uniform, hand over your hardies. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Grayson, you can get up there.
I was first, and then started out with instructions. I like that.
So if you would like to introduce yourself and maybe mention why you were here this evening?
My name is Grayson. I like sports. I play like basically everyone.
But why are you here tonight?
Oh, I'm here.
Specifically.
Oh, I'm here because last time my whole other troop did it was because like I had baseball, so I missed it.
Oh, that's why that sports story was important.
Yeah, so now I'm here today.
And this is necessary. You're going to be transitioning to Arrow of Light. Is that what's going on?
Boy Scouts. Yeah, Boy Scouts. And if I don't do this, I don't get to go.
We're so thankful you're here. Thank you very much. All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Guskowiak.
Here.
Councilmember Ray Rauer.
Here.
Councilmember Novak.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. Why don't we move, why don't we get our evening, our agenda adopted?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second. Motion by Carlson, second by Armstrong. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The agenda is adopted. Next is to approve the minutes from the February 20th meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, and I think Armstrong's got that one again. Yeah. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And those minutes are approved. We have six items on our consent agenda evening, this evening. The first one is to adopt Resolution 24-34, Accepting an Active Transportation Planning Assistance Grant from the Minnesota Department of Transportation. The Minnesota Department of Transportation's Active Transportation Planning Assistance Grant Program covers the estimated $100,000 cost of technical assistance from a consultant. City staff applied for the grant last fall to assist with future sidewalk and trail planning as well as implementation of low-cost incremental projects to improve conditions for pedestrians and bicyclists. In January, the city of Coon Rapids was awarded a grant for the 2024 cycle along with the cities of Alexandria, St. Peter, and Cannon Falls. The award involves technical assistance from a selected consultant, and no funding will be received directly from the state. Further, no matching funds are required from the city. Staff plans to provide additional information to the council at its April 9th work session after the consultant completes some initial analysis. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 24-34, Accepting an Active Transportation Planning Assistance Grant from the Minnesota Department of Transportation. The second item on our consent agenda is to set a hearing date for miscellaneous assessments 2024-1. The Board of Adjustment and Appeals is expected to conduct this hearing on May 2nd and make a recommendation to the city council at their May 21st meeting, and then staff will incorporate the process in the required mailing to the property owner. The assessments include services provided to taxpayers, in most cases code enforcement violations. The terms of repayment are determined by the amount being assessed. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 24-35, Miscellaneous Assessment, Declaring the Cost to Be Assessed, Ordering Preparation of the Proposed Assessment Role, and ordering the public hearing for March 19th, 2024 on the proposed assessment role. The next item on our consent agenda is to approve final payments for Project 21-65, Fire Station Number Three. We have a full list of contractors and final payment amounts here for Project 21-65, Fire Station Number Three. Net change orders total $12,774.97 for adjustments to the scope of work. All of the dates and amounts are reasonable and accurate according to the project file. No liquidated damages are recommended. Staff recommends approval of the change orders and final payments to the contractors listed on the attached spreadsheet. Fourth item on our consent agenda, which is actually item five on this evening's agenda, is to adopt Resolution 24-33 to apply for an outdoor recreation grant. The city staff believes it is appropriate to apply for the outdoor recreation grant through the Minnesota DNR in 2024 for the playground renovation at Al Flynn Park. This item was also discussed with the city council at the February work session. The purpose of the grant is to extend the city's existing budget of $300,000 and in-kind staff time and equipment for the project, approximately, for the project of approximately $50,000, with a DNR funding that could match this amount up to $350,000. Additional funding through the grant would allow for the playground renovation to offer more amenities, be more inclusive with several ADA accessible components, and provide a full rubber surface. So we're looking to approve Resolution 24-33, Allowing Staff to Continue to Pursue Grant Funding Through the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources for the Al Flynn Park Playground Renovation Project. The fifth item on our consent agenda is to adopt Resolution 24-39, Accepting Grant Funds from Coon Creek Watershed District and Approve Water Quality Cost Share Agreement. City staff submitted two water quality cost share program grant applications to the Coon Creek Watershed District for proposed projects. The first is a leaky sanitary service investigation project led by the Utilities Division. City staff will reach out to property owners in proposed and future street reconstruction areas to televise private sewer lines at no cost to the residents in an effort to identify potential issues within the private service lines that could potentially lead to contaminants leaching into aquifers and wells. Findings from this investigation will inform the scope of future infrastructure improvement projects. The city was awarded up to $15,000 for this project, which is 50% of the proposed budget. Staff allocated approximately $2,000 to purchase a push camera to televise for inflow and infiltration, INI, and remaining funds will be used towards efforts to reduce infiltration. The second project, led by the Streets Division, is to purchase a portable trommel screening plant used to filter street sweepings. This equipment will facilitate the reuse of sand and organics, leading to a decrease in disposal costs and the expanding footprint of storage stockpiles on city property. The trommel screening plant provides a consistent and reliable method for removing contaminants from street sweepings. By maintaining this screening process over multiple seasons, the city can prevent pollutants from entering waterways through stormwater runoff. This ongoing pollution prevention contributes to sustained water quality improvements. The city was awarded up to $50,000 of the purchase cost, 50%. The Coon Creek Watershed District agrees to disperse 80% of the approved cost share amounts, or $52,000, upon execution of the attached agreement, and the city will implement the projects by December 31st, 2025, and the Coon Creek Watershed District will disperse any additional remaining funds upon proof of completion. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 24-39, Accepting Grant Funds from the Coon Creek Watershed District and Authorize Execution of the Water Quality Cost Share Agreement. And then the sixth and final item on our consent agenda, which is actually the seventh item on this evening's agenda, is to adopt Resolution 24-40, Supporting a Minnesota Green Corps Application. We're looking, we're looking to authorize staff to apply as a Minnesota Green Corps host site. The Minnesota Green Corps program is administered by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. This program provides an educated workforce member that serves the host site with a full-time employee for a term of approximately 11 months from September of 2024 through August of 2025. Eligible organizations include public entities, well, we're just going to assume we are a public, that we're eligible, and they work in the following areas: air pollutant reduction, community readiness and outreach, green infrastructure, waste reduction, recycling, and organics measurement. Staff is proposing an application for a single team member that would provide assistance with both energy efficiency and organic recycling programs under the direction of both the recycling coordinator and the sustainability planner. And the program topic area chosen is community readiness and education. So we're looking to approve Resolution 24-40 and support the Minnesota Green Corps application. And that is our full consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray Rauer.
I just want to quickly thank staff, city staff, for all that you do to research and seek out and apply for these different grants. It's really fabulous. The Al Flynn Park one would be great, being able to have that playground be fully inclusive. So with that, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rauer and a second by Novak. Is there discussion or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Guskowiak.
Actually, I think there's quite a bit here on this consensus agenda, so I do have some questions, maybe open some discussion on a couple of points. The first one would be regarding the final payment on the fire station. I just wanted to ask if that final payment, does that consider the concrete work that we had the issues with? And so I'll start with that.
Yeah. Mayor and council, Councilmember Guskowiak, this group does not include final payment related to those, the issues in question. There's still work to complete there. It's not substantially required from that standpoint, and so we'll have to follow up on those as we close out those projects.
Okay. That's, that's what I, I thought, so thanks for confirming that. The next one would be regarding adopting Resolution 24-39, the grant funds on Coon Creek Watershed, and probably just a question for Mr. Himmer on this one, and that is the screening equipment. Just, I know that we don't collect all of our own street sweeping at Coon Rapids. We contract for that. So when we contract for that street sweeping, is that debris going to be going into this screening device and then reused, or does that company take their own?
Councilmember Guskowiak, council, that, all street sweepings in the city stay within the city. So whether we do it with ourselves or we contract it, we still handle and remove and ultimately dispose of all sweepings.
Okay. So I think it makes sense to have a piece of equipment like this. Does the county have a piece of equipment like this up at the, the organics place right up on Hanson's?
I'm not sure if it's exactly the same type. They have some processing equipment, but that's primarily for turning of the, this is actually to separate debris and other things from it, so you could keep the sands separate from the leaves and that sort of a thing. So I, I don't believe it's the same, but it's similar type of equipment.
I was just wondering if we could sift our stuff through that big piece of equipment we have up there, because, and then the last question on this is, it's a grant for $50,000, but I was looking at these screening devices. I didn't know how much they cost, but some of them are like a quarter of a million dollars. What is your estimate for the cost of this?
Councilmember Guskowiak, our request was for $75,000. We were looking at something around $150,000. But because of the requests that they received, two, two applications were given less than what they did, but the idea is that you have two years. It's good through the end of 2025. So what we'll do is try to research a little bit further, and if not, maybe we ask for the difference in the next request, or we ask for the difference in our own budgeting process. So we have a little bit of time to figure that out.
All right. Again, I mean, that recycling center is just right on, it's in Coon Rapids, right? So in Anoka County, so it'd be nice to use their piece of equipment. I know they got extra land over there too, so that's kind of, wanted to throw that out there a little bit, and then the, I do have-
I'd like to just clarify. We have made contact with them, but part of the reason is they don't accept that on their site. You have to do that work in advance. They only accept organics. So you can't bring all of this stuff up there for them to do the separating. We would have to do that first, and then we could take the organics to them, we could take sand and things to use them on other projects, and then anything that has to be landfilled would have a cost associated. So we've looked at five or six different options as far as disposal, you know? Can you just take it just the way it is? And you can, at significant cost, which is why we felt getting a piece of equipment, because it's continuous year after year, that if we find a way to keep our costs down on the disposal side and getting a piece of equipment to do that, we thought that was the best option for us.
No, it makes sense, and I mean, the way we keep our streets clean and keep all that stuff going on our storm drains, I think that's awesome. And then lastly, this isn't in the 2024 budget, so this would be, we'd be looking at that as a budget item for 2025?
We did include dollars in the budget for 2024 for our 50% of this piece of equipment. So we're going to be a little bit short, so we either delay, we look at a different piece of equipment, or we again ask for more dollars in the next water quality grant, or we seek that through the budget process.
All right. I think that covers, oh, well, actually, I forgot my glass, so I had to throw these cheaters on for me. I would like to discuss, you know, Resolution 24-10, too, supporting the Green Corps application. So my first question is on that, this is going to be for a full, a new, brand-new, full-time employee in the city of Coon Rapids. Can you help me with that?
Sure. Mayor, council, this is actually, it is not an employee of the city of Coon Rapids. It's funded through the Minnesota Green Corps. We actually have this person now. Katie, you met her last week when we were discussing in work session, waste collection. She was with Clean. And so this is a program actually the city has taken advantage of for several years, on and off, probably over the last 10 or 15 years. And what they do is they kind of come in and they work on specific projects. The city has to sort of declare that they're going to work on some of the things that they've got listed here. A lot of the way that we've used them in the past is on that waste reduction recycling side or that community outreach and education component. Sometimes they're out at, you know, onsite at multifamily buildings, looking at sort of the waste streams and how much recycling and organics and some of the potentials there. But, so each year's got a little bit different flavor. It's really just providing that opportunity for this person to come in, dedicate their, their time to specific projects, they kind of get some work experience, and they move on, and the next year we've had a different person that comes in.
Okay. I think that makes more sense. So it's, it's actually an employee of the city already, and then we're going to get these grant funds so that they can do this type of work.
Mayor, council, it's not an employee, they're not on our payroll, they're, they are paid separately. We are just providing them a location to do their work. So it's sort of like a funded fellow here at the city through Minnesota Green Corps.
Okay. All right. I think that makes more sense now, because I know we've seen, we've seen before where we get grants for a full-time employee. We have to hire them, and the grant goes away, and then we're still paying for the full-time employee. So this is not that-
Yeah. Mayor, council, as opposed, you know, we do have some grants that fund some police positions even that are through Department of Corrections or through the Department of Public Safety, rather. And so those are ones that are funded year to year or every other year, and at some point if that funding runs out, that, that person's on your staff. That's not the case here.
Okay. Well, excellent. Okay. So those are the questions that I had, and then really good answers, so I'm good with the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Novak.
I just again wanted to thank staff. I've been catching a lot of phone calls and a lot of emails regarding Al Flynn Park, so it's really good to hear that things are being done with that. What kind of timeline are we looking at for possibly getting that money and seeing that work start?
Sure. Councilmember Novak, if we are awarded the grant, we would hear in June of this year. We then can make strategy plans if we want to move forward with the plan that was presented to you last week at the work session. There'll be more discussions about that. If for some reason we do not get the grant, we'll need to reevaluate what council would like to do next as far as a tamed-down plan, or if you want to pursue the same plan but add budgetary funding next year, or perhaps we apply for a grant again. It is quite competitive. We put a lot of work into it, and the grant is in for draft review right now, and then the full grant goes in April 1st.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other discussion or questions on the consent agenda? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. We're going to go back and look up the term consent agenda.
I knew that was coming.
All right. Item eight, To Consider and Receive the Lawful Gambling Report and Authorize Payment to Community Strength Foundation. The city collects 5% of all gambling revenue generated within the city, and the city council has agreed to disperse 90% of the charitable gambling revenue the city collects to the Community Strength Foundation. In 2023, the total lawful gambling contribution to the city equaled $104,383.58, making the 90% contribution equal to $93,945.22. The 2023 cumulative fund balance for the amount the city retains from lawful gambling is currently $40,833.89, and as authorized by state statute, these funds may be used for projects deemed appropriate by council. A separate report was provided to the city council on the foundation's 2023 activities, and members of their board will present at the meeting, that would be you guys now, to highlight how the gambling proceeds support their community initiatives. If you want to come on up to the, Ambro? Lots of really familiar faces.
Yeah, just a few, maybe?
Two of our members sit on the council, so it's nice to see you guys here. Thank you for having us tonight. You did get our spreadsheet with the expenses that we spent this year. Thanks to Ms. Geisler. You do have a PowerPoint presentation that we're going to give to you here in a moment. At this point, I'd like to have the foundation members introduce themselves. My name is Scott Latta. I'm the chair of the foundation.
John Piper.
Diane Busta, and I'm the secretary of the foundation.
Sue Erickson, Coon Rapids Youth Hockey.
John Fick, Board Member at Large.
Tiffany Fick, Board Member Large.
And the PowerPoint presentation's going to be given to us by Tiffany Fick, so I'm going to turn this over to Tiffany. Tiffany.
Thanks for that intro, Scott. Okay, so I'm going to present the 2023 financial report as well as a grant synopsis of what the foundation does and where the money goes. I'm just going to highlight some of the larger events that the foundation's able to put on. So what is the Community Strength Foundation? It's a all-volunteer group of citizens dedicated to supporting the community through the stewardship of funds allocated to the foundation. All of our volunteers dedicate hundreds of hours of volunteer time to the foundation as well as community events. Our mission is to promote and enhance the quality of life in the city of Coon Rapids by supporting community celebrations and events. So this slide shows you a variety of events that we support throughout the year, everything from snowflake days to the final event of the year, which is the Tree Lighting Festival. So quickly, two of the events to kick off the season are Movie in the Park. This year we showed Lyle Lyle Crocodile, and the Summer Concert Series, which is a hit. I'm also a North Star Lion, so I can attest to the success of these events. We oftentimes over-prepared, we host the concessions at the Summer Concert Series as well as Movie in the Park, and we oftentimes prepared more food than we needed just to be sure, and at the Summer Concert Series, we ran out of food almost every single concert. So, I mean, as you can see in that picture, that was the crowd, even on the 90-degree days, there were hundreds of people there. So we couldn't, we were selling our last bag of chips and condiments for that sake, because it was so busy. So those concerts are huge, huge success. We have various genres, so something for everybody. We have people that come back for every single concert, so that's huge. The Movie in the Park as well is such a great family event, free, people bring their kids, they eat popcorn, and they enjoy the night with the blow movie screens. So next we have, of course, the Fourth of July celebration. So 52% of our funding for 2023 was on the Fourth of July fireworks. We have approximately 20,000 people that attend on the Fourth, as well as hundreds of other people that attend on the other days as well. There's no bias, but one of, we have one of the best fireworks shows in the Twin Cities, in my opinion, so, and we, we can see that based on how far people come just to watch our fireworks show. The Community Strength Foundation also pays for the marching bands for the Fourth of July parade. I don't know if many of you knew that, but this year we had Coon Rapids, Anoka, Forest Lake, and the Mung Warrior, marching warriors. They were all really fantastic, so it's, and people love marching bands, which has been great. So the foundation also pays for tents for the Fourth of July as well, so for the all-school reunion, and we added additional seating this year to get out of the elements. So the foundation pays for a significant part of the Fourth of July, obviously. Next we have Coon Rapids Love My Pet Fair. So the foundation had given a small grant for this a few years ago, but this last year we gave a more significant grant of $2,000. So it was estimated that 700 to 750 people attended, as you can see by the photos, the hot dog and the, you know, decorated pets. The goal of the event is to build the community, educate about responsible pet ownership, bring together pet lovers, and have fun. Attendees loved to gather together with other pet owners, there was vendors there as well, and participate in the pet costume contest. The grant this year, which, like I said, this is a newer grant, allowed the pet fair committee to get a bounce house, the teddy bear band, swag bags, and dog bandanas. So very successful event, and we were grateful to be able to add that to our list of contributions. Next is Rocky's Pumpkin Patch, which you're all familiar of, our bingo caller Pat there and Jerry handing out candy. So this is probably even a low estimate, but around 3,000 people attend this events the last couple of years. And like I said, many of these events I'm at, I'm on the committee to plan them, I'm a lion at the event. This event is bigger than I could have ever expected, and our Scott Chair, our Chair Scott is one that had thought of this idea, and it just continues to grow over years. So we were able to give away 1,300 pumpkins, and mind you, this is completely free to the community as well, so this is a really phenomenal event. We have bounce houses, face painters, bingo, cakewalk, more. What's awesome about the foundation and these events, we're able to partner with community and youth organizations. So it's not just an event that focuses, you know, on the city of Coon Rapids, the staff, that kind of stuff. We're able to bring in other community groups to highlight them as well. So Boy Scouts played an integral part, the North Star Lions Club, Coon Rapids Youth Honor Society as well, so they helped make the event possible. This year, and we also open it up to vendors as well. So a vendor pay a small fee to participate in the pumpkin patch, they get to give away their marketing material, candy, get to engage with the community to try and get youth to sign up, you know, for sports or their dance clinic, as well as, we had three businesses this year, we opened it up to businesses. One of the best ones was the dental office that we're giving away toothbrushes. I can tell you that probably wasn't the favorite booth, but they did give away candy as well, so. That's, this has been a really phenomenal event, as well as the, the joy that people have coming to this event, so. Next is the Coon Rapids Tree Lighting Festival. This wraps up our events at the end of the year, so this year was our largest event. We had 800 to 850 people. We were able to partner with a couple new organizations, so the Coon Rapids High School Nordic Ski Team, as well as, thanks to Pat and his grassroots marketing, Nest of Threads provided ornament making, which was a huge success. I mean, people waited in line for a couple hours just to make an ornament, and they did that free of charge, in-kind donation, provided all the material. Parents and kids absolutely loved it. So this was a really phenomenal partnership that we had, and they, they want to do more with us as a community, which is great. We also had Magnify Financial, which sponsored the event, the cookies and the hot chocolate. They came out as well as promoting their business, but got to be a part of the event. So you'll see in the next slide, one of our large purchases were tree cradles that were recommended by our city forester to safely transport the tree for years to come. They're made out of steel, and the ones we had were starting to break down, I believe they were made of wood, so. We added fireworks last year, which was a huge hit. It was a mini Fourth of July firework display, so we'll continue to keep that. One thing we're discussing for future events, we're adding more family activities like crafts and games, seeing that Nest of Threads was such a huge hit. It also kept people at the event longer, so we saw them coming earlier and staying later. One of, this was a 2023 into 2024 event, but this was the 60th anniversary of Snowflake Days. It was a three-week celebration. We had 23 events that were offered. It was one of the largest snowflake days to date. Through the multiple events- Through the multiple events that we had, we were able to partner with numerous community groups to host events. We raised money for the foundation, as well as donated a utility van full of food for AC/BC food shelf that we received from the parade. Every event was well-attended, and the great part was, it was an event for everyone, adults, friends, family, and children, wide variety of things. A few other things that we, additional supportive events and organization, are the Coon Rapids Community Scholarship Organization, the Coon Rapids All My Party, and Transformative Circle. So into our 2023 income, it was $113,230.63. As you can see, lawful gambling proceeds made up 70% of that. Twin Cities Gateway Grant was 15%, the North Star Lions, 8%. That's a... When you're looking at this chart, 8% is quite large when you're thinking of the tips that the Lions are collecting and what they're giving back to the foundation. So we're really lucky to have the North Star Lions partner with us to help make so many events successful. They're the ones that collect all the tips at every event we go to and then donate those back to the foundation. We have the Coon Rapids Fire Relief Association at 5% and corporate donations at 2%. Individual donations show zero, but we did have people donating to the tip jar, as well as, you know, buying leftover products, so I would count those as individual donations. So 2023 expenses were $134,756.73. Same thing, as you can see, Fourth of July is 52%. Tree lighting was 16, due to those cradles and the added expenses we had this year for that. Pumpkin Patch, 14. Concerts at 9%. Snowflake Days at 4%. Other events at 3%. And organization support at 2%. Our balance sheets, our beginning balance was 57... In January 1 of 2023, it was $57,520.45. Our income was $113,230.63. Beginning balance plus income was $170,751.8. Our expenses totaled $134,756.73. And our ending balance as of December 31, 2023, was $35,994.35. That's a synopsis of everything that we provide from the foundation. Like I said, these events wouldn't be possible without our volunteers and the tireless work that they do to put these on, as well as our partnership with the city. So you don't have one without the other, so we're really grateful for your support, and that's why the continued support of the lawful gambling proceeds is integral. As you can see, that makes up the majority of, at least more than half, of our overall funding. Can I answer any questions, Board?
I would just like to comment, this is probably one of the hardest-working boards I've seen for volunteer hours. I mean, set aside North Star Lions, you guys are really over the top for working, but Community Strength Foundation, it's just not a seat at the table. Everything comes along with working hours for all of the various events, and they wouldn't be successful without that, so thank you for all of that.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler.
So I want to thank the board for coming and putting together and helping people understand, because I think one of the things about Community Strength is that it's not necessarily as visible to everybody in our community, that they maybe think, oh, these are all just city events. And I think it's important for us to showcase this group, showcase what they bring to the city, and all of the great work that the organization does. You know, and so, you know, I know I had asked last year that, you know, let's look at a financial report, let's make sure, and so I appreciate all the work that the group did to help, you know, get that for us this year. Because my big... One of my key concerns is, we've got to make sure this organization is successful as a council. Because if you look at everything that they just presented, and all of the things that they do for the city, we have to make sure that, you know, there are good decisions, you know, being made, you know. We're about to give them $94,000, that we want to make sure that all of these events can continue, and that they're being, you know, funded appropriately to be able to, you know, continue on with the community. Because what I don't want to have happen is, all of a sudden, we get to the end of the year, and it's like they don't have enough money, and we have to cancel tree lighting because there aren't funds, right? So being able to make sure that we have the oversight to ensure that the funds are going to be there, so we can keep going with all the great events, is important.
Councilmember Carlson?
Yes, Mayor? Over the years, I've been blessed to be a part of many different community groups, community groups, church groups, but I have to tell you that this group of people at the Community Strength, they're just... Man, Mr. Mayor, they work really hard. They're very passionate. We have just a sampling of the membership here, but it's just an incredible group of volunteers, and they're absolutely just a joy to hang out with. And so if you see this presentation, you see that website up there, by all means, check out the Community Strength Foundation website. If you're a business and you want to become a partner with Community Strength Foundation, jump on board, because these are just, again, probably the most fantastic group of folks I can ever imagine working with. And North Star Lions, I've got you in there too, because there's a lot of overlap between the two groups.
A lot of overlap there.
Yeah, so a lot of North Star Lions are also in Community Strength, and it's just a great thing, and the impact that these events are having our community is just fantastic. It's just growing and growing.
Well, and that's our goal as a foundation, as well as, you can see, our t-shirts, our name tags. We really want people to understand our foundation is in partnership with the city to put these events on, and that's where, you know, we really look at each event, where can we cut costs, you know, what can we add, what do we want to take away to make sure that this is sustainable, especially, you know, the change in e-tabs and those kind of things, with the majority of the income coming from lawful gambling. But finding ways to make sure that we can use our money the best, for all the events the best way that we can, and that comes into, you know, with the partnerships and all of us, like Pat, Councilmember Carlson said, this group is very hardworking, they're at almost every event, they're planning events, they're on the board of planning events, so it's really the board that we have this year, and especially moving forward, they want to be active, they want to showcase the foundation, which is why we created that new logo. We have the shirts, we have our name tags, to really make sure that the city, you know, puts faces with the foundation, so they know, also, hey, go and spend more money on pull tabs, please, because it's coming back to the city and providing more events, so. Thank you for your support as well, to make sure that the foundation continues.
Councilmember Armstrong?
Yeah, I want to chime in real quick, like, here as well. First off, I'm gonna use Tiffany as an example, but man, if you want a weight loss program, try keeping up with her during the Fourth of July. My wife and I did one bingo night, helping out with the bingo, and we looked at each other at the end of the night and went, I'm exhausted, I need to go home and go to bed, but she does it every night. I've worked with a number of the individuals that are involved through different programs. These guys are second to none. And I kind of had to laugh a couple of weeks ago, because you guys are out there doing the concerts in the park, you're out there doing the Fourth of July in the heat, and when we go through wintertime, you decide to stand behind a bunch of Belgian waffle makers and with the heat on again. So I appreciate everything you do. I attended a number of the events, and you guys were top-notch at every single one of them.
All right. Anybody have any questions? Otherwise, we're looking to make a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
So I would make the motion that we accept the 2023 5% lawful gambling payments report and authorize the expenditure of $93,945.22 to the Community Strength Foundation.
Second.
Motion? There was like three of them. I'm gonna give that... Motion by Geisler, I'm gonna give that one to Novak, because he's right next to me. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. Go out and continue to do good things. Thank you all.
And thank you for your time.
All right. We are on item nine, to consider and receive the 2023 Community Development Annual Report. Mr. Brown?
Good evening, everyone. Wanted to just take this opportunity to provide some updates from the Community Development Department. Obviously, you hear from our staff members at many meetings, usually on zoning-related things, but I'd like to take the opportunity to just highlight all the good work that the 20 or so staff in our department are doing, since many of them are people who interact with the public many, many times a day. So highlighting some of our activities in 2023. On the construction side, we issued over 6,600 building permits over the course of the year. That amounted to over $95 million in new development, and that is the eighth consecutive year of construction values exceeding $90 million. Some of those, we surpassed 100 million, but at the very least, all of them, we surpassed 90 million. And since 2012, we've added more than $1.5 billion in new development in the city. In addition to planning and building, our department has its housing division, which focuses a lot of its time on implementing our rental licensing program, but also on our many housing programs, several of which are award-winning, including the Front Door Program, which every year, we find out about more and more cities around the metro area that are trying to replicate that program. It's been very well-subscribed. We had just this year, the deadline, application deadline for the lottery was last week, and got more interest than we ever have. We've also seen, for our home improvement loan programs, really record utilization of those programs, which is not a surprise with higher interest rates the past few years. People are seeking any good deal they can find, but I am pleased to report that people are still really taking those opportunities to maintain and improve their homes. On the planning side, we had a total of 23 planning cases over the course of the year, and planning staff also worked on several zoning code updates, some of which have started to come through the approval process, and over the course of this spring, you'll be seeing more of those. We talked about them in some work sessions last year. Sustainability has been a newer addition to our department. Prior to, about three years ago, those functions were housed within our recycling department, but adding that to community development has really improved collaboration with our housing programs. So we now have several new offerings in the last few years, including discounted home energy squad visits to help people save money on their utility bills, green homes rebates, which incentivize people to update to more energy-efficient appliances. Last year, for the first time, we held the native plant sale, which was a huge success, so that's something we're doing again this year to help people buy discounted native plantings. We also, last year, adopted a beekeeping ordinance, and have seen, including from Councilmember Novak, a few applications so far, so that's been a success. Finally, our property maintenance division does the hard work of fielding complaints from people about different residential property maintenance-related violations. A few years back, we implemented what's known as the Courtesy Notice Program, so basically, the first contact for those property maintenance violations is a more friendly-written letter, a more lighter touch, which has actually resulted in our analysis, better compliance, and just with that first contact, if people don't know, you know, they had a problem, we kind of... We want to work with people to get them to comply. So that's been a success, and it actually is a pretty high volume of inquiries that those staff get. Everything from people whose grass is long to junk and debris, unlicensed vehicles, so definitely challenging work, and I think they're doing everything they can to make sure our city continues to look good. A bit of a preview for 2024, we have... We always like to add a few things to our work program every year, so for this year, a couple of highlights. Earlier tonight, you adopted a grant resolution for some active transportation planning assistance, so we'll be updating our sidewalk and trail plan, as well as coming up with some other improvements, doing a ton of public engagement as part of that process, so we're really excited to get started on that. We'll be talking about that in an April work session with you. We also plan to enhance some of our housing programs. We have new sales tax revenue coming to us from the state, some other outside funding sources as well, so we have the opportunity to make some improvements to those. I should mention, too, that the North Suburban Home Show is coming up this Saturday up in Andover from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., the Andover YMCA Community Center. Also, we're going to be bringing back the home remodeling tour this year, coming up in May. And on the permit side, I'm pleased to report the first couple months of this year, we actually had higher-than-normal building permit issuance. I would attribute some of that to the warmer weather and ease of doing roofing in January and February, but nonetheless, there's still a lot of activity going on, despite some of those, a little bit of a pause on some of the larger-scale projects, so. Happy to answer any questions, but that's our department report.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Novak?
Well, I just want to make it very clear that it's not Councilmember Novak doing the bees, it's the lovely Mrs. Novak. But I've watched her do this, and I would really encourage anybody who has any interest at all to look into this. It's a fairly straightforward process. You go to a class, you... It teaches you what you need, and it shows you really how important the bees are to the environment around us, and so, yeah, they'll check to make sure that there's nobody around that is allergic to, but for the most part, these aren't issues with other neighbors, and, well, hey, let's face it, everyone loves honey.
Mr. Brown, this is very impressive, this whole community development report, and on page three, it's signed by Matt Brown. Is this the first one of these you've signed?
I believe you're correct. I have only been in my...
Congratulations.
...curfew for about a year, so I got to finally sign the report. Thanks.
Very nice. Very nice. All right, any other questions or comments on the Community Development Report?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ray Rowan?
Thank you, Mr. Brown, for those details, and it sounds like we've got some great development going on in the city. And with that, I'll make a motion that we accept the 2023 Community Development Annual Report.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rowan, a second by Novak. Is there any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Nicely done, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Item 10 is to consider a joint powers agreement for the mill and overlay of Egrit Boulevard between Coon Rapids Boulevard and the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad tracks. Mr. Hammer?
Mayor, Council, this is yet another one of our street maintenance program, in addition to the reclamationite and seal coating and crack sealing. What we found was Anoka County was doing their own mill and overlay on Coon Rapids Boulevard, so as opposed to trying to coordinate our own efforts, we thought they're going to be right there at Egrit and Coon Rapids Boulevard anyway. So we asked if we could piggyback on one of their projects, they agreed. So basically, there's really not a lot of money exchanging hands here, other than we are responsible for our own inspections, we're responsible for our own costs, we're responsible for managing our own stuff, they just included the bid as part of theirs. We estimated the work to be around $90,000. It came in after bids around 83, so it's right in line with what we expected it to be. And so this is just a joint powers agreement between the city and the county. We handle our side of things, they handle their side of things, and it will be done similarly to what we do with our other mill and overlay and full-depth reclamation project. So I recommend adoption of this, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Do you have any questions, Mr. Hammer, on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Make a motion to approve execution of a joint powers agreement with Anoka County to perform a mill and overlay of Egrit Boulevard from Coon Rapids Boulevard to the BNSF double-track railroad crossing.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, and a second by Novak. Is there discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. That is really much-needed work, and we are really looking forward to that down on Coon Rapids Boulevard. All right. Item 11 is to consider utility rate change. This is on the water, sewer, and stormwater utility funds.
I'm sitting up this evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. So the council's asked to consider some changes to our utility rates for our water, sewer, and stormwater operations. These activities are accounted for in their own enterprise funds, and so they're set up to be self-supporting, meaning that the fee revenues need to pay for all operations, capital, and debt service, and it does not rely on any... and it does not rely on any tax support. These operations are capital-intensive, and the city has a good history of making significant investments in maintaining and replacing our, our infrastructure, so to make sure that we're continuing to do that and that the funds maintain health, continue to be healthy in the long term. Over the last few years, we've worked to develop some long-range funding plans, specifically on water and sewer, and we're working on the stormwater here this year to refine that. So, for considering this, for consideration this evening, we are proposing for the water fund an 8% increase in the base and usage fees. If you recall, last year, we adjusted the structure itself, so this is just a flat 8% increase. For the sewer rates, the last time that we've increased these is in 2017, so it's been a while. We are recommending an overall 12% increase. Now, to accomplish this, we're recommending some changes to the structure. We are, as a side note, we're, we're moving billing systems this year, so to kind of help with that, we're looking to simplify the structure, and so, for sewer rates, you'll find that we have a base fee, which is a service charge, is intended to cover the city's expenses and infrastructure, and then there's a usage charge, and the usage charge is meant to cover our disposal costs that we are charged from Met Council. For the base fee, we're proposing an increase for both residential and non-residential properties, and consolidating the residential structure, residential fees into just a simple residential per-dwelling unit rate, and then a multifamily rate for those that have a common meter. And then on the non-residential, we're also proposing to consolidate some of those fees, so instead of having four separate rates, we'll have two. On the usage charges, there's no increase proposed on the residential, that will remain at $3.15 per thousand gallons, and we're proposing a 15-cent increase to the non-residential. We're also proposing to modify our billing practice, so each year, our residential properties are given a winter average, so for the winter months where they're not irrigating or filling pools or doing things, we try to establish a baseline of how much sewer is actually going down the drain. So, historically, in any given period, a resident can be charged one of four ways, and we're proposing to simplify this by just using the winter average for the entire year. If the winter average is less than our minimum, then the user would be charged the minimum the whole year, so this would make for a more consistent bill for both the resident as well as administration for the city. We're also proposing to remove the upper limit, so there's a maximum in place now. By charging the winter average, there would be no instance in which a resident would be charged more than that. For stormwater, we are proposing a 5% increase, just across the board here, we are engaged with Lers to conduct a rate study this, this spring here, and so, down the line, we anticipate that there could potentially be more increases, as we'll, we have some federal and state mandates that are in place, and so we want to make sure that that fund is also self-supporting. The, the changes recommended would be effective for utility bills sent out in May, that would be due in June. Overall, depending on a property's type and usage, utility account holder would see an average of 7% to 8% increase overall on their bill. I do have attached to the memo some sample utility impact analysis for the different property types, and I'm also happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Novak?
Ms. Hanson, real quickly, I know we discussed this one quite a bit, but for those watching at home, could you explain the winter average as far as water is concerned and why that makes a difference?
Yes, Councilmember Novak. So, the winter average is actually for our sewer, and so, water usage tends to vary much more in the summer, and so, we take the winter months, when you're not irrigating or you're not filling pools, and we've, take that as the baseline of water that's, that you're, you're drawing, but then you're also going down the drain, and so, that's, that's the sewer that gets treated by Met Council, and so, by billing that, we know that that's the rate you're going to get charged the whole year, so in the summer, for the, when you are irrigating, you're not going to get charged sewer for any above the, your winter average.
Thank you.
Sorry.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ray Rower?
I just want to point out a couple of things in the summary, and also, first of all, thank you and the staff for all of the time put into this, it really was a massive undertaking, but the purpose is to ensure the long-term financial health of the funds, and to ensure the continued delivery of services to citizens and businesses. And there really isn't much more important that, that we do as a city, other than water and sewer, and that those are something that we want to make sure are working really well. And finally, the last thing I wanted to highlight was that we take a proactive approach to addressing aging infrastructure, which actually saves money over the long run, because if you have failures repeatedly, that costs more than the prevention, so all of these things are, are fabulous, we do a great job, and that is kudos to all of you that do this work. And with that, I will, can we do all together, I'm assuming? I will make a motion to adopt Resolution 24-30 Sticks, establishing water rates, and adopt Resolution 24-37, establishing sewer rates, and adopt Resolution 24-38, establishing stormwater rates.
Do you want to do the other? We also have, wait, oh, sorry, it printed it twice on mine. Oh, what, those are the same numbers.
Well, that being the case, I'll second it.
All right. So, we have a motion by Ray Rower and a second by Novak. Oh, I see, it's the attachments, that, that reads almost the same as the resolutions. Okay, got it. All right, is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
I look at, I mean, I look at rate increases the same way I look at a, you know, increasing a levy. I know it affects our residents, and, and so, I mean, that, you know, troubles me whenever we do anything that affects our residents, that troubles me, but I do think this is good spending, you know, we're at that point now, we're not, we're not building out more, now we're, you know, we're, we're changing over our infrastructure, and that's super expensive, and I'd much rather, rather do it this way than to have to bond. And we have some large projects coming up, we have a pretty big one coming up this summer, but we have some more larger projects on the horizon, and I, it just makes a lot of sense to kind of build up our fund right now, so we don't have to bond as much and pay the interest on that. So, I'm, as much as it always troubles me to raise rates, I, I've heard from a couple residents, as much as it troubles me to raise rates, it is the right thing to do for what we have to do in our city.
All right, pretty good. Councilmember Guskowjak?
I would totally agree with Councilmember Carlson on that one, but I, and I would also like to compliment Ms. Hanson on the work that she's done, because in our work sessions, there was a lot of information put in front of us. We had several work sessions, it seems like it's been going on for several years, it probably has been going on for several years, in conjunction with consultants, with Lers, and you really kind of boiled it down to us and presented to us where we could really make some informed decisions, and, you know, you know, to earlier points, this is necessary to keep us solvent into the future, so this is really a thoughtful approach, and I support it.
Mr. Stemwell, do you foresee any problems with tomorrow morning's staff meeting with that last comment, that not many things we do that are more important than water?
I was kind of seeing the police chief wince a little bit over their public safety, you know?
That is something, that's very important.
Mayor, Council, we have to spread the attention around every once in a while, so I do appreciate the, the comment about water and sewer, it's very important as well, from an infrastructure standpoint.
All right.
Left out the cornerstone of civilization.
All right, we have a motion and a second, do we have further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Anybody, this is nobody here for open mic. I don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are up to other business. Before we get too deep into other business, I have a letter that I was asked to read during other business from the, on behalf of the Snowflake Days 60th Anniversary Committee, and it is, "Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Staff, and Coon Rapids Residents, we want to extend our sincerest and most heartfelt thank you for the support you all provided for the 60th anniversary of Snowflake Days. Even though it was the busiest and most jam-packed snowflake days we've ever had, we had a lot of fun, and our committee had a great time celebrating with everyone. Many of you attended events, and some of you attended multiple events in a week. This snowflake, the Snowflake Days celebration was a joint effort among community organizations and the city of Coon Rapids, and we couldn't have done it successfully without the outstanding partnerships we were fortunate to establish from the beginning. We may be biased, but the city is second to none when it comes to strong community partnerships, and we are grateful to live and volunteer here. Thank you again for the unyielding support from Councilmembers, City Staff, community groups, and citizens of the Coon Rapids community for helping to make this year's Snowflake Days one of the best and a very memorable one. We can promise Snowflake Days 2025 will be much shorter, but still just as much fun. Thank you to all that helped make it a success, and we look forward to seeing everyone at the next community event. Thank you," and that's from Tiffany, Diane, Tim How, Sue Erickson, Eileen Tonder, and the rest of the Snowflake Days 60th Anniversary Committee.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Novak?
I, I'll wager right now that the next Snowflake Days will also be warmer than this one, or pardon me, colder. Yeah, this is the warmest one we've had in some time.
Good chance of that.
Yeah. How long did the ice sculpture last?
Yeah, not quite as long as they planned.
Ooh.
We knew, we knew it was going to be, the night of the chili feed, I'm walking from the church over to Shana Clear by the ice bar, Councilmember Guskowjak is standing outside, so I stopped to talk to him, I'm in a short-sleeve shirt, for like 15 minutes, and I thought, oh, this is, this has not bode well for that ice bar. But, no, it was really fun, and it was a lot of great things, and, yeah, and stuff. All right, other business.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
I just want to point out the Coon Rapids Parks and Recreation booklet. Don't worry, Mr. Mayor, I'm not going to read the entire booklet right now, but I do want to point out that there are so many wonderful things in here, it's not just Park and Rick, I mean, it's just everything that's happening in Coon Rapids, it's almost as good as our quarterly newsletter, I mean, it's fantastic, and so, if this hasn't gotten to you yet, and you get this in the mail, please don't throw it and recycle, bring it in the house, read through it, there's just some great things in there, and keep it as a resource. There's, there's events and projects and everything for the whole year in there, it's just a, such a great publication, and Ms. Ring, if you had, I'm sure you had something to do with that, that was a great job.
If I may thank our team, there's a lot of work that goes into that to consolidate all the information, many people worked very hard on that, and so, we appreciate residents looking at it. There's also, if I may put a little plug in, we're asking a survey about your community parks, and if you go to one of the last pages in the book, we have an online survey form, we want to hear from people about what they love about their community park, the neighborhood right closest to their home, what do they love about it, how often do they visit, what else would they like to see, we're just trying to gather some additional information, so, it's interactive as well, and it's a engagement opportunity to reach out to us, so, thank you to everyone.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other business to have before council? Mr. Stemwell, anything?
Mayor, Council, I was just going to mention that soon, residents, property owners will be getting their value notices, and it's an important time, that if you have questions about the value that's being estimated for your property, that you ask those questions now. Council will come together as the Board of Appeals and Equalizations, Local Board of Appeals and Equalization, thank God it's got there, sometimes I mix up that with our other one, in April, and that's the opportunity for folks to come if they want to contest that value, however, nine times out of 10, if someone calls our City Assessor's Office, we're able to explain the process, why there's a change in value and so forth, so, we're kind of getting into that season, I always want to encourage people to call early, because we are able to answer those questions, and for the most part, people are satisfied with the outcome of that, and if not, you have your opportunity to pursue either contesting that value or taking it to tax court even, or, or something of that like, whereas, if you wait too long, you no longer have that opportunity, and then you'll get your actual property tax statement next fall, and you want, you may have a question about value and why your taxes are increasing, but it'll be too late really to talk about your value, it'll only be about the new levies that the local jurisdictions are, are placing on the property value, so, keep your eye out for that in the mail, keep an eye out for that local board meeting, it'll be listed on that value notice, and if you have questions, give our City Assessors Department a phone call.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Ms. Lenz, Mayor?
Mr. Mayor and Council, a reminder that tomorrow is the presidential nominating primary, polls will open at 7:00 a.m. and will be open through 8:00 p.m. If you're not sure where to vote, you can visit mnvotes.org and click on Where Do I Vote, or you can call the clerk's office and we'll look it up for you.
And that's, that's why we're meeting on a Monday.
Yes, thank you.
All right, any other business to have before council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion by Carlson, second by Armstrong, to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.